Okay. Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. This is a public hearing. Good evening all. Thank you all for coming out tonight. My name's Mayor Richard Stewart and on behalf of City Council, it's my pleasure to welcome you to this public hearing into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. Council for City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has asked that a public hearing be heard, be held, to hear the public's perspective. On each of these items, first we'll hear from staff of the Planning and Development Department to present a summary of the proposed bylaw and then we'll open the floor to anyone in the audience who has a perspective on that bylaw. I stress to all of you that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaws to make that view known to council members. We're all here with an open mind and we want to hear your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these bylaws. However, it's not a question and answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of a proposed bylaw with council members, staff, or anyone in the audience that disagrees with you. So we ask everyone to please restrict your comments to the bylaw at hand, be as brief and concise as possible. We'll limit folks to a, actually, we won't do that tonight. Typically, it's a five-minute limit, please, if you want to get back in line after you have more stuff to say. I'll ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. Refrain from clapping, booing, cheering any of the presenters tonight, as Chair of the Hearing Council has given me the instruction to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive, or becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council. If you have some written materials that you want to be part of the permanent record on the item, you have to hand it in before that item is adjourned, hand it into the clerk's table here. We can't actually receive any information as a council after the public hearing until we've given it fourth reading or denied it fourth reading. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing, we'll have a regular council meeting in order that council can give considerations to items on the public hearing agenda. However, if during the public hearing, council requests further information on an item or for any other reason the council member is unwilling to, not wanting to hear it tonight, we can defer consideration of that item to a subsequent meeting. I'll now call on Ms. Lor to introduce the bylaws in tonight's agenda and the Planning and Development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item 1 is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 1286 Hollybrook Street from RS2 One Family Suburban Residential to RS8 Large Village Single Family Residential.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This site is located on the east side of Hollybrook Street, south of David Avenue. The site is designated Large Village Single Family in the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site into the north and south is RS2 One Family Suburban Residential. Zoning to the west and east is RS8 Large Village Single Family Residential. The site currently has a single-family residential dwelling. The applicant is requesting rezoning in conformance with the city's official community plan to RS8 Large Village Single Family Residential to facilitate subdivision into six large village, single-family lots. Staff are recommending all final readings to rezoning by law 4426.
Thank you very much. Just to confirm with the clerk's office, I have no speakers listed. There we go. No one's pre-registered, so we'll open the floor. Are there any speakers to this item? Second time, are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? I'll declare this item closed.
Item 2 is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 1290 Hollybrook Street from RS2 One Family Suburban Residential to RS8 Large Village Single Family Residential.
Good evening again. This site, similar to the one just to the south, also is designated Large Village Single Family in the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site into the south is RS2 One Family Suburban Residential. Zoning to the north, west and east is RS8. The site currently has a single-family residential dwelling and the applicant is requesting rezoning in conformance with the city's official community plan to RS8 to facilitate subdivision into six large, single-family lots. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4427.
These people aren't very original. I've heard this before. Are there any speakers to this item? Please step forward. The way this will work is you'll step to the microphone there and you'll give your name and address for the record and then give us your thoughts.
Hi there. My name is Erica Stevenson. I live at 1284 Creekstone Terrace. Don't really have anything prepared, but what I'm looking at on the map there is that it looked like there was going to be a road that was going to be in between those two rezoning and considering that I live at the end of that road, I don't think that it's, you know, going to be in my best interest as a property owner to have a road that's going to dead-end into my house. So, just wanted to...
Okay, so there is a T, anticipated, I gather, at lot 17 on Creekside. Is that the case, Mr. McIntyre?
I can't tell from the, is that a road there or?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, yes. The original plan for the entire subdivision of this area that went along with the official community plan that actually brought forward all the subdivision you see in front of you here today did anticipate some required roads to access this entire neighborhood back to Hollybrook and to the surrounding road network, Coast Meridian. So there are a number of roads that are fundamentally required. Currently, there is a temporary access down here, which is temporary only, so these roads are required. They've been shown on the original plan and they are necessary for the subdivision of this area.
Okay. That's all I have to say.
No, that's fine. So there's about 105, there's about 100 meters between Hollybrook and Creekside and there's obviously no other way to do a single-family neighborhood with 100 meters.
Yes. Right now, the current, all of the properties in this area, like I said, including the original subdivision, that started the pattern, it all fundamentally requires access be connected back to the main road system, including down to Mason, which currently there's an access, temporary access through parkland to Mason that has to be closed, but that would only be closed when we achieve the ultimate network, which is to connect this entire neighborhood back to Hollybrook and eventually to Coast Meridian as part of the overall network. And so, that is fundamentally required to both subdivide the properties, so that access is required, but secondly, to provide the appropriate network for all the residents in this neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay. So my question would be, why would there have to be a road and why would it not go straight up to Hollywood, Weston, and then down Creekside? I'm not sure why, you know, the area needs an additional road.
Okay. Unfortunately, the answer was that the two roads that we're dealing with, the north-souths, are 100 meters apart and therefore you can't, you can't have these very deep, deep lots and the decision was that you'd need, you'd need some crossroads somewhere, either north-south or east-west, in order to service the lots. So, that's the challenge before us.
All right.
And if we, obviously, if we move a road, then someone else comes before us and says, well, wait a minute, it's in front of my house. So, I've got Counselor Hodge, beginning with Counselor Hodge.
Yeah, just to follow up on the residence question. So I guess the only other way, back when this was all bush and there was nothing here, there could have been another road north-south between Creekside and Hollybrook and then they could have backed, but they, the roads have, the homes have to back-to-back somewhere and we have to have street frontage. So it was just a, in this case, because it was laid in a grid, this is why they went east-west, but, and so I understand that and the only other way to do it would have been way back to have put the other road, but that was decided before Creekside was even put in. I guess my question would be is, these interior roads here are going to be residential standard? How wide will they be? Will there be parking on both sides of those roads? And they are true, I guess, local residential roads. We don't expect any traffic other than the local residents? May I get clarified?
Yes, Your Worship, that's exactly correct. These are really limited local, that's a through-local road. It's just a local standard. They are, in fact, they're going to have slightly wider sidewalks than you see in some parts of the northeast, so we're going to have the full one-and-a-half meter sidewalk. They're going to have parking on both sides, so it is essentially an eight-and-a-half meter carriageway standard, which is the parking on both sides and sidewalks on both sides as well.
Okay. And Hollybrook, it's set up to be a right-in, right-out, so we shouldn't see traffic coming through using these as a shortcut. It's just basically going to be, they should just be the residents who live on that street, so we're not creating any sort of traffic, potential traffic issues in this neighborhood because of the, because of the road configuration? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. It's a limited movement up at David, so there's no left turns. It's basically right-in, right-out. Ultimately, the Creekside Terrace connection to Mason will be disconnected, so when all of this, you see the three roads that we've ghosted in the plan, those are planned, but all of that, so basically, the entire network is supported by the signalized intersection at Mason and Coast Meridian and there is a limitation up here, so we do expect that this would be primarily localized traffic that is in this area.
So Creekside is actually almost becoming a crescent at that point, then?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
Counselor O'Neill.
Counselor Hodge, I anticipated one of my questions and that was dealing with, asking on behalf of the resident who's here, whether or not residents of Creekside could expect a major traffic flow through this new street that's being constructed here. So, the answer was no, so there won't be a lot of, on the other hand, there, what would be the benefits to the residents of Creekside for these east-west, like, there may be benefits here. Are there benefits to the Creekside Terrace residents, to these east-west roads?
There are benefits. With all the developments, they'll complete the other half of the road, which would happen notwithstanding, but the benefits of actually adding connections east-west is that it really does reduce the amount of volume on each of those connections. So residents don't have to circulate through the entire network to get to their lot. In fact, they can go up Hollybrook, up to wherever they're located, up here if they're located up at the top. So when you actually have more connections, it actually minimizes the amount of distance traveled in front of all the properties and there's good data on that. So those additional connections actually support a reduced amount of traffic on individual lots.
And what's standard, what would be the speed limit on those roads?
50K.
50K on all those roads?
I believe it's 50K, yeah.
Thank you.
It'll all be default at that point?
Default.
Counselor Reed.
Thank you. My question is not for you, thank you. Mine is through to staff. And now that you're building this nice little grid pattern and I see you're making this road wider, so we have parking on both sides of the street, are we not still requiring parking for suites? Off the street? I don't think the taxpayers should be paying for tenants to park on their street.
The standard, Your Worship, the standard in the subdivision development bylaw is that all roads now are going to have a minimum, local roads would have a minimum carriageway or pavement, curb-to-curb, to have parking on both sides, except for narrow roads, which we do not do in this area. So, in this area, there will all be parking on both sides. However, if an individual owner is seeking a suite, they would have to provide the additional parking stall on their own property. That's a separate, that's for the suite.
Yeah, I agree, but I think at this point in time, all the developers are putting suites in or they're putting the plumbing and the wiring and everything ready for suites, so if they're doing that in the basements, I think they should have to have an extra parking pad on their lot right away. So how are you dealing with that?
Yes. Your Worship, when building permit is submitted that has a suite sewn on the property, they must show an additional parking stall on the property to service that suite.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Counselor Zaccora.
Yeah, thank you very much. To the planning department again. Are these houses allowed to have basement suites if they want to?
Yes.
So, Dan, when you're saying that they don't have to provide the parking, do they have, how many parking spaces do they have on each site?
He actually just said that they do have to provide parking if there's a secondary suite. So there's additional parking.
But how many parking spaces do they show in the plan?
Your Worship, normally, a conventional, single-family home in this area would have the, normally, the garage, a double garage with two stalls, typically, the apron in front of the garage can accommodate two more stalls, so there's four stalls technically available for the home. If the plans submitted to the city for building permit identify a secondary suite, then that property, the building plans approved for that property must show an additional parking stall on the site to accommodate that suite. So they'd have to have five stalls, or essentially, two and an additional one, and then there's two additional in the apron for the owner of the dwelling. But there'd be one additional stall would have to be shown on the plans to accommodate a secondary suite.
Okay, so when your inspector goes in there, he'll inspect the plumbing and everything else, if it's there for secondary suite? Are you saying that he'll be checking for that?
Your Worship, there may be cases where a plan submitted for a single-family home do not identify a secondary suite. Upon inspection of that property, it may come to the attention of an inspector that there is a secondary suite. At that point, further work is done with that owner to make sure the occupancy of that building is in keeping with the bylaws. The bylaws require a secondary suite have an additional parking stall on the property. So when that comes to the attention of city staff, we move to rectify the occupancy, either by requiring an additional stall be put in or by requiring the suite be eliminated.
What happens if the owner decides to put a suite in there and not let the city know about it? How do you control that?
Your Worship, it's difficult to control. Most cities struggle with this issue. Many owners who buy property may decide at some point to put a suite that is unauthorized. In those cases, we do rely on other property owners in the area to be vigilant and they, then, often, we get phone calls from residents that see a lot of activity on a property and we're able to move through an inspection process with those sites.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I have one additional comment. There was a comment about the north, the possibility of an additional north road, north-south road. I have to remember, there's 100 meters between Hollybrook and Creekside, which meant that you take 20 meters for a road and you're left with 40 meters on each side and those, it would be 20-foot-deep lots and that's not just unusual, it's almost impossible to do. But whether or not that was done, without any side roads like are proposed here with the nameless road 1, 2, and 3, all of the traffic from Creekside Terrace would be going up and down in front of your home, actually. And right now, the traffic will almost always find another route because the other, for example, if they wanted to go east on David, it would take the side road over and go up Hollybrook to east, east to David. So I actually think this is going to be relatively neutral. The side roads are going to be relatively neutral as far as the contribution to traffic as well. The number of driveways that would be facing Creekside Terrace under that scenario would put a whole bunch more traffic on Creekside, so I, I'm not certain that this is going to have the impact that you think it might have, so. Are there any other speakers to that item? Are there any other speakers to that item? The third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, thank those speakers and move on to the next item.
Item 3 is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 1060 Austin Avenue from C2 General Commercial to C5 Community Commercial.
Good evening, Your Worship and members of council. My name is Chris Jarvey, development planner for the City of Coquitlam, and I'm here tonight to present a rezoning application at 1060 Austin Avenue. The property is located on the southern side of Austin Avenue between Nelson and Marmont The site is currently zoned C2 General Commercial and zoning in the area is predominantly comprised of C2 General Commercial with RS1 One Family, RT1 Two Family, and P1 Civic Institutional Zone properties nearby. The site is designated Neighborhood Center in the Austin Heights Neighborhood Plan and the adjacent lands surrounding the property along Austin Avenue are also designated Neighborhood Center, while the properties to the south are designated Medium Density Apartment and Neighborhood Attached Residential. The applicant has applied to rezone the site Community Commercial, which is the corresponding zone to the Neighborhood Center Line Use Designation. No. Depends on which way your view is. The applicant has applied to rezone the site C5 Community Commercial, which is the corresponding zone to the Neighborhood Center Line Use Designation, in order to construct a new three-story office building with six commercial tenant spaces. All units will be accessed from a central lobby and elevator with all parking access from the rear lane. Staff are recommending second and third readings at this time to bylaw 4431 2013. Should council grant second and third readings, staff would prepare a report for fourth reading and DP authorization, which would be presented at an upcoming council meeting. Thank you.
There you go. While I was there that night when the tragedy happened a year ago and I'm so glad to see the project come forward, are there any speakers to this item? Please step forward.
Are there copies for all of you to review that or just one copy over here?
If you hand them to them, they'll distribute them.
Are you sure? Good luck.
No, just hand them all to them. It'll be distributed.
I need one, though, I better, I don't remember. Now, do you need my name? I'm reading this letter on behalf of Peter. He's written it.
If you could give your name.
My name, my name's Linda Pashka.
Thank you, and you're speaking on behalf of the...
Peter Meagan.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ready? Okay. Mayor and councilors, I'm asking you tonight to approve the application for a zoning amendment bylaw and I would like to present a brief history, less than five minutes, of relevant events from the past year that have led to this request. As the mayor just mentioned, on September 6th, 2012, a fire destroyed the building that housed my family's 40-year Coquitlam Insurance Agency business and also the real estate office of our tenant Leo Bruno. On September 26th, Realtor Wayne Tullis, Leo Bruno, and I met with the city's Planning and Development Department with Michael Dollywall, Chris Jarvey, and David Monroe. They told us then we would be able to go ahead and rebuild our building. On November 19th, a representative from my insurance company, and architect Dani Bruno, received an email from planning assistant Amelia Mattson, also saying that the property could be rebuilt. As a result of these communications, Dani and I spent six weeks designing the new building. On Friday, January 11th, at 5:01 PM, Dani and I received another email from Amelia Mattson saying that we could not, in fact, rebuild and that as it was her last day of work with the city, she would be unavailable for discussion. We then spent three weeks not knowing whether we could or could not rebuild. On January 31st, 2013, Dani set up an emergency meeting on the earliest date the city could meet with us, with Erica Tiffany, Supervisor of Development Planning, along with Michael Dollywall, Chris Jarvey, Andrew Merrill, and David Monroe of the Planning and Development Department. Dani, two of my insurance company representatives, and I attended and sought clarification. We were told then only that the city had changed its mind again. At that January 31st meeting, Dani also confirmed what and where on the site we would be permitted to build and the setbacks of the building were confirmed. Dani then spent two months redesigning the building. In March, I received a bill from the city for utilities. Six months earlier, however, I had paid $3,200 for disconnection of my services. I phoned the city, but they couldn't explain the utilities bill since services had been disconnected. On March 28th, Jim McIntyre, general manager of Planning and Development, wrote to seek a meeting with me to discuss my utilities bill. A few days later, we met at the firesite. Jim brought with him Raoul Aloueva and David Monroe. Raoul told me then that the city did not want me to build. He asked me to instead meet with all the owners from 1046 to 1066 Austin, to the corner of Austin and Marmont, to persuade them to join with me to sell our properties to a developer. He said that my rebuilding, my small building, did not meet with the city's vision. His request was something I had already done and so had Wayne Tullis after the fire and we had not found any owners interested in selling. I told Raoul this. He responded by asking me to build a three-to-four-story building that would blend into the future development of Austin Avenue. I said I would consider the change if the city could work with me. Raoul suggested at that time that I seek a zoning change to accommodate a three-story building. That day after the meeting, I advised Dani to stop the design he'd been working on. On April 17th, Dani and I met once again at City Hall with Raoul, Michael Dollywall, and Chris Jarvey to get the specifications for what they wanted us to build. We were given the specifications for a three-story building. For the next month, Dani again redesigned the building to meet those specifications. On May 15th, Dani and I met with Michael Dollywall and Chris Jarvey at City Hall once again to go over the requirements and the specific location for the new building. For two months, Dani worked on plans based on the instructions given in the April and May meetings. We submitted plans to the city for a July 25th review. On August 16th, we received a set of recommendations from the city. One new major requirement was a further increase in the building setback from Austin Avenue. Dani again had to redesign the building. On August 18th, I wrote to the city with a set of questions on behalf of my mother, the property owner, Mary Ann Meagan. I requested a response in writing. To date, I have had no response. To sum up, Mr. Mayor and Counselors, since the devastating fire that destroyed our building over a year ago, my family and I have been seriously miscommunicated with, costing us hugely in time, money, and stress. Every month that our building goes unbuilt costs my mother $6,000 and costs our tenant Leo Bruno as well. I am standing before you this evening, although he's sitting there, to request that you approve the zoning amendment bylaw before you and that you support in any way you can the speedy issuance of our building permit. Thank you on behalf of the Meagan family.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask if, okay, Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I certainly appreciate the temperate language and the calendar that you've presented, the fine detail. I particularly appreciate the fact that you end this with a simple request, that we approve the bylaw and that we support the speedy issuance of your building permit. And I don't actually have a question for you, Mr. Meagan. I do have a question for staff, though. So this is before us for second and third reading and the suggestion is that if that's granted, then we'll be, he'll be back with a report for fourth and a development permit. And the obvious question is, how soon could that happen and what are the things that anybody needs to do to bring that on? Thank you.
Should council support the rezoning today? We're expecting to bring forward the report for final approval for the rezoning and the DP for October 21st.
Okay.
As soon as possible. That would finalize the project entirely and they would have to go into building permit.
Okay, so there are some things that you yet require from the owner before you can get to fourth and DP?
It's, yeah, we're very, very close to finalizing everything, but the October 7th meeting, it would be the next one, is very challenging to make. We could look to see whether that's a possibility. If not, the next one after that would be the 21st. That's just the council meeting that's scheduled. We'll try and see whether the 7th is possible.
Okay, well, without prejudging our decision later at the council meeting...
I can certainly say that...
As soon as possible is a great answer. Thank you, Row.
There isn't a lot, we are moving as quickly as possible to get this completed.
Thank you. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you. I'm going to ask staff, first of all, thank you very much for coming out and I thank you for this detailed list. I wish you'd called, I wish you'd, but I thank you very much for bringing it to our attention now and I want to ask staff, obviously, there's things that would have been done differently. I suspect that this was the worst possible time for this to happen to you. I granted, there's no good time for your building to burn down, but this is the worst possible time because we're in the middle of revisiting an entire neighborhood, trying to make it as good as possible and you're a big part of that neighborhood. And so I recognize that in the middle of that, it appears that the city's goals for your neighborhood, which are this, probably the same as yours for your neighborhood, fell into conflict with your goals to rebuild your building as quickly as possible. And so I'm going to ask staff if there's lessons learned here or if there's some response related to the chronology that has been described to us.
Your Worship, we'll certainly go back and I want to revisit the file myself and just see how it progressed from one stage to the next. I do recall meeting with the gentleman out on site. There seemed to be a lot of confusion at that time between what could be built... There seemed to be a lot of confusion at that time between what could be built under the current zoning, the C2 zoning, and then with the widening of Austin, the dedication that would be necessary, what would remain on the property, and that the C5 zoning, which is consistent with the vision of the Austin Heights neighborhood plan, higher density, would probably make more sense for the property owner. I think the confusion at the start was, and certainly it was a devastating fire, I think there was sort of a misimpression that you could rebuild the building on its original footprint in that location. And I'm not sure how that misunderstanding of communication happened at that time, but I will go back and check into it. Certainly, our intent when we met out there in August was to... And also, that's right, there was a debate around the utility bill, and obviously, not having a building on the property, the way our utility system's set up, you pay the charges just for the right of having that service there. And we had that discussion on site. By that time, I thought we had a solution in hand in moving it forward to a successful conclusion under the C5, a higher-density building appropriate for that neighborhood. But we will go back, and certainly, as Raoul said, we'll make every effort to move the applications forward as quickly as possible.
Well, I know that my time is only five minutes, and believe me, I can go on for way more.
Actually, you get five more minutes, because that was a different person. In fact, after the length of time we've had your file, take as long as you need.
You've had my file. I'm angry, and that's one of the reasons I didn't read the letter, because it would have come out way harsher. I wanted to get to the point, and that's why I put it in point-by-point-by-point form. But, Richard, it was a year ago since we had our fire. I want to thank you. You came up... I still get emotional over it. You came up, and you stood with me in the Safeway parking lot, and you put your arm around me, and you said, "Peter, I'm so sorry that's happened to you. Is there anything I can do for you?" You put your arm around me, and you consoled me, and you said, "What can I do?" And I jokingly said to you, "I could sure do with a beer right now." You said to me, "I know the owner of the John B. Pub. I'll phone him up. I'll get you a six-pack of beer, and I'll drive you home." I didn't take you up on that offer. I haven't asked for any help throughout this whole year, and believe me, I've been through hell and back 10 times over. But I'm asking the council tonight to get this building moving, get my mom back on the other side of the street where she belongs, where I belong, where Leo Bruno belongs. I've been putting up with a lot of stuff. The city tells me to do something. They tell me to jump. I say, "How high do you want me to jump?" Then they change it again. They tell me to jump even higher, and I jump higher. I've designed a nice, nice, nice building. I submitted on July 25th. The person who reads the report, they get back to me and say, "We don't want you to be on the main floor. We want you to be on the upper floor. We'd rather have a coffee shop and a Starbucks on the bottom floor." So not only have I designed the building that the city wants and asked me to do, now they're telling me where to go in my building. I need to be on Austin Avenue. I'm getting off topic here, and that's part of the reason I got Linda to write the letter. But I need building permits. My mom can't afford $6,000 per month. That's what we're losing out on. She's paying $3,000 a month to live in Earl Hague. And this is like $10,000 by the time we add in everything. I don't think anybody in this room can afford $10,000 a month. The city charged me, off topic again, $3,500 for street closure, for traffic control. Nobody can answer that. What did I pay that for? What my goal is, I've had incredible, incredible support from my customers. And I tell all my customers when I come in the office, I said, "The City Hall, they charged me $3,500 for street closure for some bloody stupid thing because I had a fire? My goal is to have a brand-new building, to have a big, huge street party with myself and Leo Bruno, and have so many people up on Austin Avenue. You can close the street down and charge me $3,500 again because so many customers have got me through this." Without my customers, without my family, without Dennis, without Leo, I wouldn't have got through this because of the frustration that I have with the city. We've got to get this thing built ASAP.
Well, Peter, I will...
Thanks again for the offering.
I will commit... I wish you'd have taken me up on it, because I wish I'd have heard you. And I will commit this to you, that this week, probably tomorrow, there'll be a meeting with staff, and I'll be going through them, and any council member that wants to will join me, and we will sit down with our staff. Our goal has always been to make it through City Hall as easy as possible, to make that process painless to the extent that we can, knowing that we're trying to design a great city. This didn't work for you.
No, I understand that I've fallen between the old and the new, and it's all guesswork. As an example, nowhere on Austin Avenue is parallel parking, but yet I got to have parallel parking. Nobody can explain to me how that's going to work. There's got to be a drive-in and an exit. I got to have a hedge around my back parking lot. How on earth is a Smithright container or whatever we got to go with going to pick up a... I mean, there's no buildings up there that have hedges around the back parking lot or climbing up vines up the sides of the building. Now, Raoul, you asked me to build a three-story building. We're standing on Austin Avenue, and you asked me to build a three-story building. And no time, Raoul, did you mention to me that I had to build a hedge. And no time, Raoul, did you tell me that I got to paint the sides of my building to make it decorative instead of brick. I designed a three-story building, and then after the plans are reviewed, I said, "Okay, now that you built a three-story building and it's higher than the other buildings beside you, you now have to decorate the sides." Why wasn't I told that when I was asked to build a three-story building instead of three months later? So I don't know if you guys are familiar with the game SimCity. It's a game that the kids play on their computers where you build the cities, right? Well, I feel I'm playing a game of SimCities, and I'm one of the characters. I'm being told what to do and be moved around, and, you know, it's affecting my health, it's affecting everything. Anyways, I go on and on and on, but I won't. I'll leave it at that. But thanks again for the beer. And after we get the building built, maybe I'll invite you to the party. Maybe. Yeah, there's a maybe in there.
Well, I thank you for coming out. We... There's a couple of other councilors that want to ask, but I will make this commitment, that tomorrow we'll be having a discussion. The goal is to make a great city, but also to make the process smooth and easy to get through. You've described a process that's unacceptable. You've described a chronology that's unacceptable, and we're going to find some answers. I know that staff were moving down a direction that we all agree on. We will end up with a city center that has the hedge and the back lane and parallel parking all the way down the front street, but the process didn't work in this case, and we're going to find out why, and we're going to make it work.
There are some comments that were made to me. They probably shouldn't have been made to me. I scratch my head why they were said to me. I asked at one of the meetings, like I said, I'm giving this. I'm giving up some of the property. You call it expropriation or whatever you guys want to call it, but I asked at one of the meetings, "What is the city doing for me?" And Michael Dollywall says to me, "We're letting you rebuild." He shouldn't have said that to me. "We're letting you rebuild." I'm a victim of a fire, but thanks, Michael, you're letting me rebuild. I bit my tongue that day. At another meeting, I was asked, "Are you going to stratify the building?" And I'm thinking, "Yeah, I might stratify the building." Well, we don't want you to stratify the building. And I said, "Why not?" And Dennis was at the meeting, so he could vote for this. We don't want you to stratify the building because we don't want to deal with six owners. We'd rather deal with you. He shouldn't have said that to me. I bit my tongue. I didn't tell my mom about it. My mom doesn't need to hear that kind of crap. So, yeah, there's been lots of issues that I've been biting my tongue for a long time. Sleepless nights, lying in bed in a fetal position, ball in my eyeballs out, mad at Raoul, mad at Chris Jarvey, mad at Jim, mad at the city. But I bit my tongue. But today, I'm not biting my tongue. I want something done, and I'm asking you, please, get my building built. I have builders lined up. Speaking of builders, the insurance company couldn't even get any quotes on building my building. We tried to get six builders to quote on my building. Five builders turned it down, and the reason they turned it down is because of the headaches and hassles that they have to deal with the city. That's why the insurance company couldn't get any quotes, because no builder is willing to quote on uncertainty. I got one quote, so the insurance company had to go with it. So, you know, there's a little bit of news. I mean, you've got to make things easier for builders. My builder doesn't even know what to quote me on, because he didn't know he had to build a hedge. He didn't even know that we might potentially have to move a BCA hydro pole. That's not even on my property. It's on my next-door neighbor's property. But I was told, because the fire occurred on your property, you might have to move the pole. It's not even on my property. Who pays that bill? Now, the insurance company's reopening their file, because they phoned me up the other day, they're paying for the fence rental, and they want me to get building. And when I mentioned all these problems, they said, "Well, holy smokes. You know, we've kind of already agreed on a price, but now we've got to pay for moving poles. We've got to pay for hedges. We've got to pay for climbing vines. We've got to pay for painting the side of the building. We've got to pay for concrete blocks." So I've learned a lot from this. The builders are afraid to deal with the city because of so much uncertainty. And I know that Austin Avenue has been redeveloped. Do any of you know up here that because of the dry cleaner and because of the gas station up there, no banks will lend you any money to build? You have to have soil samples done. Phase 1 costs $2,500. As soon as they see a dry cleaner out there, as soon as they see that there was a gas station, you then have to get core samples from the property in order to borrow money from the bank. That could be tens of thousands of dollars. But the city isn't aware of that.
We're aware of it. It's not us, though.
Well, Raoul didn't point that out when he asked for a three-story building. I didn't have to do that before getting a three-story building. So after I design a three-story building, I approach a bank, and all of a sudden, I'm told, "Okay, you've got to get soil samples." I'm thinking, "What? Well, there's a $10,000 bill, if not more." So nobody... Nobody told me that before designing this building. So, yeah, so let's get this building built. I also mentioned when Jim and Raoul were there is, if I could work with the city, the city is redesigning the whole street, I'm willing to use my building as an example of what Austin Avenue could be. I want to hit a home run with this thing. I want to make a nice, nice building, very nice building, that the city will be proud of, will be proud of, and maybe it will encourage the rest of the people up there to bring their properties up to snuff or knock them down, and, hey, let's build. So anyways, I've said enough. I can go on and on. You've got other stuff on the agenda.
Our goal's a great Austin Heights, and we'll be working on this stuff. I've got Counselor O'Neill.
I think I'll save some of my comments and observations for the end of the public hearing for when this comes up for the bylaw consideration, because we want to try to limit this right now to the rezoning of the land, right? Okay. And so I want to ask on your behalf, something about the presentation that was made a few minutes ago, towards the end of the second page, second full last paragraph. On August 18th, you wrote to the city with a set of questions on behalf of your mother. To date, you've received no response, and I'd like to ask the staff, is there anything in those questions or the answers that he's seeking that has germane to our decision tonight, information that we should have here at the public hearing? Do you know what the questions are? Are you working on the answers?
I believe the email had some questions around the development requirements, such as the road dedication and the requirements related to the bigger setback on Austin, because it is a major arterial road. And according to the zoning bylaw, there's an additional three-and-a-half-meter setback. I believe we've advised the architect that that's the city's requirement in the zoning bylaw, and we had considered that answered, but we can go back and actually do a formal response to the email. Many answers are provided through the owner's agent, through discussions about the project, so not every single communication is actually answered formally and responded to by the manager or even the planner. Often, those are communicated through meetings with the architect. There's lots of discussions that occur, but we can certainly go back and find that email. I don't believe there's any element of that that would prevent council from dealing with the project, unless the owner believes that there's something in there he needs to reconsider. Then that I'm not sure about.
Yeah, that was actually my point, that I don't know what the import of those questions were, and if it had any bearing on your decision to proceed with your rezoning request.
No, but I wouldn't have written that letter if I didn't want answers.
Of course.
The letter came from me. It didn't come from my architect. I'm the one that wants the answers. My architect had nothing to do with that letter. I want the answers, and I want it. My mom needs the answers.
There's seven people sitting around this desk who want some answers, too, so... That's fine. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have to make sure we focus the meeting tonight on getting someone a decision on a rezoning. I think I know which way it's going to go, but I... Let's get through the public hearing. Counselor Sikora.
Yeah, thank you very much. I remember meeting Peter on the street on Austin Avenue, and he was telling me the story, and that's why I brought it up last Monday in a committee meeting to all the council members, because I couldn't believe what he was going through. In fact, you know, it goes a little further than that when I mentioned, "How come David Monroe, that is not the planner, are ending up at all these meetings?" And I could not get an answer why he was there. So, you know, that bothers me to no end. Also, Peter was told that he has a drawn mural on the side of the building for some reason, you know, I mean, we don't know why. And then, secondly, am I correct, Peter, that you were told that you should not open up your office, your insurance office, on the main floor?
Right.
Because they wanted a boutique and a cafe?
After the July review of... We submitted some plans for the July meeting. As per all the requirements we were told up to that date, including all the correct setbacks, they were in the July submission. When the report came back after the plans were reviewed, we were told that we had to move the building back another 1.5 meters. I think that's what it said. Why we weren't told that before, I don't know. But it was also suggested because it's going to be a professional office building, and I guess the key word is "office." I guess whoever read it at the city thought, "Okay, well, this is an office. It should be on the second or third floor." And by the way, we would like either a coffee shop or a ladies boutique or something like that on the lower floor. I'm not building this building for a Starbucks or whatever. I need to be on the main floor. And when I got that, I thought, "You know what? The people at the city have no idea what I'm going through. They just want a building, and they just want to stick me anywhere in this building." I felt like I had a knife in my back when I got that letter, but once again, I kept my mouth shut. But tonight, I'm allowed to talk.
And I understand that, you know, everybody wants to straighten it out, but, you know, the horse is out of the barn.
The horses are out of the barn.
You've gone through hell, and the fact is, is this an isolated case? I would suggest to the council members and the mayor that it's not, that it's not an isolated case. If Peter's going through this, there's many, many other people going through the same thing. I hear about permits that take three months to get through the planning department, a few other things. So, you know, I don't want to go on on this.
We can't, actually, because it's a public hearing.
But I'll tell you what, it's very dark to me to see a businessman on Austin Avenue. How about the Austin Revitalization Committee? You know, there's the president, the chairman, or the vice chair, and that... How come they didn't come forward and come approach us, the Austin Heights?
Nobody's talked to me.
Maybe they didn't know.
They probably didn't know.
I want to add something else in that I mentioned at the meeting when Erica was there. I got to put park benches on my property, which is now going to be the city's property. I got to install certain types of park benches. There's lots of graffiti artists up there, so I'm glad that I'm supplying a place for them to sleep now, I guess, but I got to put park benches up there. And at that meeting, I asked you, Erica, "Who's going to be responsible for that park bench?" It might seem like a minor thing, but it's not a minor thing to me. I've installed a park bench at Robinson Cemetery for my dad when he passed away in 1995. God bless him. I installed a park bench in 1995 at Coma Lake for my brother James when he passed away. When I go up to Coma Lake, when I go up to Robinson Cemetery, I can't even sit on my family benches for my dad and my brother because it's so green and slimy. But at that meeting, I asked you, "Who's going to be responsible for that park bench that I got installed in front of my building on my property?" And you sheepishly looked at me and at the insurance company, and you said, "We will. If I put that park bench outside my office, I want the city to maintain..."
If I put that park bench outside my office, I want the city to maintain it because you said you would, and I don't want it to go into disrepair like the other park benches that I've installed in this community. Why do I have to put a park bench in front of my property?
I don't know yet. We're gonna find out.
We will find out.
Why do I have to put a bike rack in front of my property? Not that I mind, but I don't like, it's been, you know, I gotta put cobblestone bricks down. I gotta climb any vines. I gotta put park benches. I gotta have bike racks, and it just can't be any bike rack. It's gotta be a certain type of bike rack or a certain type of park bench.
Peter, I guarantee you, we will have a discussion. Tonight's about rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
I'll tell you, what probably happened here is there are, if a developer had bought your property, we're gonna make sure that we're, in the course of revitalizing Austin Avenue, we achieve something for the greater good of the community. And that means suggesting that perhaps there's a coffee shop, perhaps there's those sorts of things. You got dealt with in the same way, I suspect.
I've been saying that for a year. I am not a developer.
And that's unfortunate, and I think it's, I think we have to find a, find a reason, we have to find a solution here. To me, you're, the tragedy that you, that your family befell, that befell your family shouldn't have put you in the same category as the conventional developer that comes in and wants to build a building.
Thank you for recognizing that. I've been saying that for a year.
Yep. So we're gonna find out, but tonight, it's about rezoning.
Okay.
When you leave here tonight, you'll have an answer on rezoning.
Let's get a rezon, let's get built. Thank you.
Counselor Hodge.
You know, it is a discussion about rezoning today, and I find myself wanting to answer questions, and, and I will get a chance to speak later. You, you mentioned that you've learned a lot. I've learned a lot tonight, and, you know, and, you know, you're right, I had no idea what you were going through, but tonight, we have an opportunity to at least give you some answers. And I think at some point this evening, you'll get those answers, and then I've been on, I'll have an opportunity to, to speak on this. But unfortunately, at this point in the, in the agenda, we have to deal with the, the land use, land use issues. And I do have one question to, to staff. I noticed that, that the applicant has made some reference to, to murals and to location of where his office or his business will be located within the office, that, or the building he's proposing. Is this application, does it rest on that? Is that part of it? Is that part, do they have to do that in order for this to, to go through? I'm just wondering how much of what we heard tonight is actually tied to the, to the zoning, or is that part of a development permit to, to follow further down the road?
The, the, the design of any blank wall on a public street, it's like any other neighborhood center. Typically, it's, it's a design requirement under a development permit, so it, we have noted it as a design requirement along all, all public-oriented significant blank walls. So, but is a development permit requirement will be addressed as part of the development permit that will follow? Should council approve the rezoning to a third reading tonight?
So some of those other things we can-
Yes.
-deal with at another, at another time, and we can have a chance to have that discussion. But tonight, we'll talk about the, the zoning or the, or the ability to, to move forward. So I look forward to that part of the discussion, where we can have more open discussion on the matter. Thank you. And thank you.
Okay. I have no other council members with questions on that. Presenter, are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Please come forward, sir. No, no, wrong, 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 sir. The other sir.
Mayor, councilors, my name is Seving Chung. I live at 1053 Charlan Avenue. I was wondering if the city considering making a speed bump on the back alley because of the rezoning increasing the traffics.
Okay.
Yes, Your Worship, there's an additional, it is a principal access lane. That lane will be widened from six meters to eight meters, so this particular project will actually increase the, the, the amount of lane space. So it will be an additional meter and a half.
That wasn't the question.
Oh, speed bump. No.
Because a lot of traffics right now going through there with the rezoning, that would be increasing traffics as well.
Normally, speed bumps are only introduced once traffic calming is identified as an issue. So what occurs is with our transportation department, the operations group would do an audit. If requested by you or other residents, we'd have someone go out, take a look, and audit that, that lane during heavy use. At that point, they'd look at the opportunities for any kind of calming if, if necessary. So we could certainly take that back.
Thank you.
It typically aren't part of the rezoning application. It's typically an engineering question that comes up later. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? The third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Item four is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to increase the minimum construction value for exemptions for development permits from $50,000 to $150,000.
Nice to see everybody. People has to work. There were shares. I did not do it in my lifetime. Now I need some help. And I mean that too. That fire and all the wire in the back. I don't like that big wire in the back, but the place that burns to ground. All my customers, 1,500 customers, all burned to ground. I'm very excited. Yeah. Nice to see Lucy as too. Live luckily over here.
Thank you, Mary Ann. You take care.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm over the hill, no.
I'm gonna call a two-minute recess.
Item number four, city initiates zoning bylaw text amendment would amend the zoning bylaw to increase the minimum construction value exemption of development permits from $50,000 to $150,000. The proposed zoning bylaw amendment is in association with proposed amendment to the city's building bylaw to concurrently increase the exemption for works and services for minor developments from $50,000 to $150,000. These amendments are being initiated primarily to address inflation with respect to minimum threshold values originally established in 1980. Staff are recommending all final readings to rezoning bylaw number 4435.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? That's the last chance. I declare this item and the public hearing closed.